This conference will now be recorded.
Item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney claim discussion of potential and existing litigation pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. Donnie, would you leave some pledges today?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners, reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. JR, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I went to the public, uh, the public lands meeting the other day, but it, what we discussed is on the agenda, so.
Okay.
We can cover it then.
Alright, anything else?
That's it.
Dee?
Okay, I went to the NACO meeting and I only did it online this time, but we talked, they, every month they have a different person comes in to do presentations from the state. And so the natural resource manager was there this time. That was interesting. They have an opening at NACO if anybody's interested in another job. And then I went to the Austin Airport meeting and they had a few questions. They want to know who's doing the fuel and how are they tracking it? And who's going to make the reports so that Michelle can put them on the reports for the airport? The receipts are not working for the fuel after you pay for them. And also we need to update the sign for the emergency contact. If like the fuel runs over or something like that, it still has that company that's no longer contracted with the county. So, and then I did a NACO bylaws meeting and we finished updating the bylaws with NACO. And I went out with the beautification committee out to Austin and Kingston.
Nice, thanks Dee. Do we have any other commissioners online? Okay, so that is it. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, commission. So for the Austin Fuel, we are doing the reports in-house. Lakens doing all them and then we can work on the receipts. We've had to generate a few receipts for some pilots that have got them and haven't been able to print the receipts. So we can always generate one in-house and send it to them off of that system.
Okay.
I believe that we did pull down the signs with the names on there. If there's one still existing up there.
Well, he says they're still there.
Okay, because myself, Donnie, and Sean were out there and we pulled them off the fuel pumps. So we'll double check the pilots' lines and everywhere else, see where else they may be posted, but, and get some proper contacts there. So what, I would like to give the commission a little update on what we've been doing with some of the community improvement projects. You guys set aside some money for community improvement. We want, you know, this to be felt visible results. And some of what we've done are, we did the rec shop over there. If you go by the rec center, you'll see the shop that's built there and alongside of it, that was, that was a building, was a project, but the, um, all the landscaping that went alongside of that was part of the community improvement, along with landscaping out in front of this courthouse and some around the, the school there. You can also see that the overpasses have been cleaned up, the weeds, that was the county and, you know, bringing some people on to help us with that, along with power and some other county properties around town. So we're going to get to Austin as well, Dee. We haven't forgot about them. I see, I see you kind of giving me the look.
No, 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 I was just listening.
And then Main Street, they're taking out all the planners in there. We're putting in new planners. We have a few people that are volunteering to take care of them planners, kind of have their name in them and a little bit of advertisement for themselves if they would like, or, or just to make them pretty and kind of be a part of making the community a little bit better. We have a meeting coming up on the 18th. That'll be at 3:00 PM that you guys agreed on at the last meeting. And this will be for community improvement projects, ideas for moving forward. We don't want to spend our time or money into engineering or other things that eat up time if it's something the commission wouldn't want in the first place or the community wouldn't want. So that on the, on the 18th, anybody here's interested in seeing this community get better, show up, put your piece in, we, we encourage that. We're going to be talking about things as far as, you know, the back nine potentially on the golf course, all the way to, you know, what themes we're going to use throughout the community for statues and things of that nature. That it'll all be listed kind of out in that agenda item. And other than that, everything else that we have is on the, is on the agenda, or I will touch on at the end of the meeting in the, um, you know, when we wrap up there.
Okay, alright, thank you, Bert. So we'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll move into.
Lenny's.
Oh, sorry. Morning, Lenny.
Morning. My name is Lenny Shepherd and I just have a comment about a meeting I attended in Austin on the dispensary. And my name was brought up about six or seven times and I never got to say one thing back. And I don't appreciate it when somebody says I don't have facts saying anything. And here's a bunch of facts that I studied for over a year, me and my wife. And there's another booklet just like this. So when you let one person get up there on a teleprompter and badmouth everybody that's against having a dispensary except three people and badmouth two commissioners, there's something wrong. Somebody's got to get a handle on something like this. I mean, I don't want to sit there and argue with somebody or beat a dead horse. This is the done deal. It's passed. So I just got my say there. Now I have another little item. You know, we have the, the town, they're cleaning it up. It's looking good. It's, they're trying. There's, I think, five or six abandoned businesses on Main Street. The fire hall looks like it's abandoned. Man, that's a public building. Can't we do something and paint that up? Put a little money in that and be proud of it? You can go to Valmy or Golconda or B Wallway or Crescent Valley in Austin. Their fire hall looks nice. I know we're building a new one, but don't let the other one fall down. A little paint would help. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Lenny. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing and copies are available for a nominal charge. So one, approval of September 1st, or sorry, September 12th, 2024 consent agenda. Two, approval of June 27th, 2024 meeting minutes. Three, approval of July 11th, 2024 meeting minutes. Four, approval of July 25th, 2024 meeting minutes. Five, approval of August, August 8th, 2024 meeting minutes. Six, approval of August 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes. Seven, approval of payroll change requests. And it looks like we've got items one, two, three, and seven that we'll need a motion on.
I have a question first.
Yes.
When I look at the minutes, when I read them this time, instead of going through and doing the full minutes, they just referred to the fact that you can look at the video and told you what timestamp it was on the, on there. So you could go and look at that video. Is that legal?
Yeah, so we aren't verbatim because we do have the video and the price of verbatim is so much more. So if they go through and make them verbatim, then, then that price hikes it up. The time that we takes to get them back also is increased. So yeah, it is perfectly legal to do it that way.
Okay, so they can just basically gloss over everything and tell you to look at the video? Okay?
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, one, two, three, and seven.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving into 1.1, payment of bills for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills. We need to pull check number 225123.
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the bills.
I second it.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we're doing nothing on the one we pulled, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the reason we pulled it was it's just made to one of my clients. So 1.2 for discussion and possible action. Actually, we're going to jump it up. I'm sorry, we have some people that had some prior engagements that would like to be able to speak early. So we're going to listen to 1.9, which. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove Lander County's public lands use advisory planning commission, PLUACs. Recommendation to the county commissioners to hire a contractor, Andy Reiver, to review and update the Lander County policy plan for federally administered lands. Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Go ahead, start.
Okay, well, mine's more of the commentary and then Wayne will get to the punchline. Okay, so in, just for a little bit of history, the Lander County policy plan for federally administered lands was first a senate bill that was approved in 19, in the 1980s. So in 1984, then again in 2005, and then again in 2017, Lander County assigned a group of people through PLUAC to update the plan. So how I found out about it was when we were working on that wild horse presentation, that state of emergency. It was referred through Louis Lanny to, hey, take a look at this plan. It has some, you know, pretty solid stuff in it. And I was blown away because I'd never seen it before. It's a fantastic plan. It, uh, it does need to be updated. And that's where we found a lot of our information on, you know, the, the wild horses and Lander County's perspective on that. But it also talks about everything from recreation to soil to water to everything. It's an excellent plan on how Lander County has some teeth in how our federally managed lands are administered. Why I did that is because as I was growing up, it was called the Bureau of Land Management. Lander County and the state of Nevada owns the land and the BLM manages the land, but it has shifted and you guys are all aware of that. It fills and it, the belief is they, they own the land and it's nothing against the local people. It's an excellent plan. It does need to be updated. Personally, I feel that we did the state of emergency for the wild horses and there has been movement and things are happening with the BLM and, and we're happy about that. But the state of emergency is much larger and I'm learning a lot more about it by being on PLUAC on the public lands advisory board. We have the green link transmission that I know Pam talks to you guys about. A lot of water moves happening statewide because we track a lot of the water moves happening. We have recently, I think this last week, executive order 14008. It deals with the climate crisis and it's a Biden and Harris initiative that will impact millions, hundreds of millions of acres in the western states with green energy mandates. The solar and the wind and all that stuff. So we are coming to you and Wayne's going to speak more about his process and finding somebody to help us. So we, in our naivety, decided we would update the plan. Well, we got to about page four and said, this is way above our pay grade and level of, well, my level of intelligence. These guys are a little sharper than me. So anyway, we really decided we need help, but it's a great plan and I think it can become a guide. And once it's hopefully done, we need to have it printed out and available because it'll help us have some guardrails around what most of us on this advisory board feel is some, some big overreach that's been starting to happen or has been happening. At any rate, and then, uh, once this is done, I want to bring up what Utah's doing, but it doesn't apply to this. It's just maybe I'll do it and if it fits into this, what Utah's doing with the lawsuit challenging control with the BLM. So Wayne, if you want to speak to what you've been doing.
Okay, uh, in the PLUAC board, we came up with the facts and the facts were that the, the public land policy, uh, there was a lot of legal, legal changes that had occurred over the years. And, and those need to be addressed by somebody professional that, that has experience dealing with that other than just a volunteer board. And anyway, we had, we had talked and reached out and I had reached out to, to several different communities and found out what they did. And, uh, the name of Andy Reiver kept coming up. And Andy Reiver has, has done the, the, updated the public lands policy for Humboldt County. She's in the final stages of that. And, and she explained to me that she could probably, uh, uh, piggyback most of our things off of Humboldt counties. And she's also worked for other counties and this, this would give us the ability to, to be in agreement with other counties around here. And so, so we all had similar policies. And, uh, the, the dollar figure that she gave me was $150 an hour, which is really cheap for this kind of, uh, uh, expertise. And nobody did I talk to that had a negative word to say about hiring Andy Reiver for the results that they got.
Okay.
And, uh, is there any comments from you, Mike?
So it's supposed to be renewed every seven years, so we're on track for it. So if you guys are interested in reaching out to her and maybe pursuing this, we would be appreciative.
Well, that was my question was how often does it have to be reviewed? So it's every seven years?
Yeah, seven years.
So yeah, that's, uh, does the board have any questions?
No.
Does the public have any questions? Alright, well, I'll hear a motion.
I, a motion that we approve PLUAC hiring contractor Andy Reiver to review and update the Lander County policy plan for federally administered lands.
I'll second it.
We're going to have to have an agreement at some point.
Yeah, well, that's.
Oh yeah, you guys take it from here.
Yeah, we might have to bring this back one more time.
Right. So should we just give direction to, uh, to bring her back rather than a motion? So we'll just, you guys stand directed. And thank you very much.
Can you guys get us that information so we can, yeah, so we can get some sort of agreement put back on the next agenda?
Right, I do, I do believe Pam has all of her contacts. Okay, now we're going to jump to 1.7. For discussion, possible action to approve, disapprove, and/or give direction to staff on how to proceed on outlining the guidelines to develop a program for citizens of Lander County to access funds through incentives or reimbursements to improve their real property using a percentage of net proceeds fund set aside for that purpose. So basic, you want to give a background on that, Bert? How we come to this?
Sure, so kind of the thought has been with, with this commission, um, a few times we brought up how we can reduce taxes and it's, and it's always came back to, you can't reduce taxes without another entity within the county picking them up or having the ability to pick them up, which is the hospital and school district. So we wanted to hitch net proceeds to our community. So every time they tried to sweep net proceeds, the community would have a reason to fight for our net proceeds and not just the commissioners. Because I don't think that they realize what a big deal it is every time that they come in, you know, and every so many years they come in and take a shot at it. The legislature meeting again, so you know, every, every few years they come and they take a swat at it and, and it'll probably, there'll probably be another swat this year. The thought behind this was to somehow refund every property owner in Lander County. And the initial thought was property owners that have a livable structure that is permitted on Lander, on Lander County ground, um, not just, you know, people that own chunks of land that may not live here, have any connection to our, to us. Well, legal feels that there may be a conflict there that that, that may be discriminatory in some way, shape, or form. So the, the next idea is to create a program much like we have with our business improvement plan, where we take a percentage of net proceeds that we receive and we apply it to a fund that any citizen of Lander County can come in and access that fund to whatever level you guys would like it accessible. But they would have to show some sort of improvement, whether it's, you know, they mowed their weeds or they painted their house or poured a sidewalk or did something to also improve the community. So it would be hitched to an improvement of the community, then we aren't giving money away. Now we just need to, before we continue pushing forward on this, we just need to make sure that we have direction from this commission on where we want to take this and, and to what level and how much time we want to put into trying to get something hitched to these net proceeds. So we aren't spinning our wheels.
Yeah, that's about background.
I don't know if that sums it up.
No, it does, yeah. So my, that, so when, when I first heard and was looking at this, I, I liked the idea of being able to pay back. Because that was the whole point was, you know, we were getting calls and complaints like taxes are outrageous, they've gone up and found out really there's nothing that we could do about it. But, I mean, I'm geared more for like, I'd like to see like, to where there's a give back to more Lander County citizens than just people wanting to improve their properties. Now, I know there's some opinions legally that that might not be possible, but man, I'd really like to, me personally, I'd really like to dissect that to see if that's actually legitimate and that we can't. You know, I had something more in, in lines of like what Alaska does with the pipeline, right? Every man, woman, and child gets a dividend check back. Well, we're dealing with net proceeds. It is Lander County's mineral and the ground that they're taking out. I think if there's a way that we could give it to every Lander County citizen, that would be ideal for me, might, in the way I'm thinking. Now, if we find out that it can't be that way, this, I guess is, I guess that's what we're discussing is other avenues, how we can do it. So do you guys have any questions or ideas or?
At one point in time, we had talked about using it as an incentive to get people that have, you know, 20-foot weeds and 50-old junk cars to use that as an incentive to try to get them to clean it up. People that have nicer properties, which we pay more taxes because we have nicer properties. We have sidewalks and grass and, and outbuildings and we get hit on all of them. So giving the people that have nice properties, something that more beneficial than the people that have the 20-foot weeds and the 50 dead cars is, would be beneficial, I think. But, you know, or, you know, all the junk piled behind their business.
Yeah, because that's kind of what I think is the people that have worked hard to improve their properties, to make them look good. It's almost with the system of what we're like looking at today, it's almost like they're penalized.
We are, absolutely.
They're penalized and the people that are wanting to take the money to improve the projects, I get the idea. But where does it leave all the people that have been responsible in the past? It's almost a, a bit of a penalization is how I see it, but.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with you, so.
I drove around, I got here early today, so I was driving around Battle Mountain and there are some beautiful properties. And then there are some of them that you're just going, are you kidding me? Why aren't we doing something about these? And it's the same way in Austin and Kingston. You know, it's just giving by giving, I don't know how to put it, but giving the people that have all this junk incentive to clean it up is what we should be doing.
Yes, so the, the initial thought when we were talking about this was we were going to do a, you can hire companies that come in and they, they do a mass sweep of your county. So it's a third party. It's not, you know, anybody from the county that would go assess every property to make sure that they're compliant with code. Anybody that wasn't, then they would, we would have a list that would show that there was code compliance there or non-compliance. And they wouldn't get the refund for that, that year until they came in and we went and said, oh yeah, now you're in compliance. Check them off the list next year, you get the, you get to be a part of this incentive package, right? And it's just a matter of getting that through legal and seeing how we can, how we can do that, if we can do that, um, without it being discriminatory, because I think that that was the concern at this point.
Alright, so if they do that and they use our money and they hire a mower to come in there and mow their weeds and they clean all that up, and then two years from now, it's back to where it was or the next year because they wanted that incentive money. Do they have to pay it back? You know, I mean, or that, that it really, there's a lot of questions there, but I think it's a great idea. We just need to figure out how to.
That's what we're here for today.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? So I'd open it up to public comment, discussion, questions, ideas.
John Davis. I agree with Commissioner Sparks and Commissioner Hellman that I've done my job in taking care of my property. I've spent the money. There's zero incentive for me to get on board with just as a grant process. Talk about code enforcement. That's probably where the county needs to start. There's a rulebook that's in place. Enforce it. Then you can give back to them in some way. Ten, the way I look at it, 10% of $10,000 tax bill is more than 10% of a $1,000 tax bill. If, if you come up with a percentage on what you're going to do based on the property, uh, in my eyes, that's a fair way. Because I mean, some, some of us pay more because we're assessed more. Some of us pay less because we're assessed less.
Because we have nicer buildings and sidewalks.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, but just as a round number, I mean, it's, if you put it into a percentage-based theory or formula, those who pay more get more back. Those who pay less get less. It's, there's no discrimination based off whatever you're paying in taxes. I don't know how they can discriminate against that. But if you type it, in my mind, just thinking out loud, that's, would be a better way to approach it. But to get back to the Bert hit on the code and what Commissioner Hellman is saying is that you need to, all we got to do is enforce what's already there and they're going to reap the benefits anyways. I mean, uh, Alaska, every man, woman, and child gets a check. I guarantee you, they're not all spending it on their property. I mean, there's, you're not going to be able to drill down and tell them how they're going to do that unless it, how they're going to spend it unless it is in the form of a grant. And is that right? And then there's strings attached, right? I think you're, you're trying to get, yes, you want, it's going to be hard to attach strings to this.
So I think we're combining two topics. We, we would love to see it go for the beautification, correct? But the idea is, is that it, and that would be the code violation. If they're in violation, then you don't get the money. But the, uh, but the real, the real hook to this is getting the net proceeds hitched to our people that would be upset about that being stripped from them. So it, it has the, the dual hooks there and that's where.
That, that was what I'm saying on, I mean, you're not, you're going to have a hard time outside looking in, being able to do that if my understandings are right. Because you can't, I, I don't know how you do that, Bert.
Well, we don't expect them to spend the money on their, fixing up their property, but we expect them to be in, um, in compliance with the current county code in order to receive the money. So had the, uh, so the, the idea isn't necessarily to give them the money to improve their property if we were going that route. Now, the second route, which would be creating a fund that people could access and, and apply for, then it would be directly hitched to property improvements. So I, I guess that them are kind of.
If, but if I must have misunderstood you, then can you make, can you tie it to the code though? Or are you going to be able to hold that money back if you tie it to the code?
If we went with the first scenario, yes. If we went with the first scenario where every, every property owner in Lander County gets a check, unless they're not compliant with code, then they don't get a check. But that's the one, that's the scenario that, that we're being told may be not legal.
Correct.
So the, the second scenario is creating a fund or percentage of the net proceeds that is in a fund that people apply for. And they would have to go through an application process to access the money. And that's where I think that you're saying individuals like yourself have no point in applying for it. Your house is already perfect.
Well, it's not perfect, but.
I don't mean, I don't mean that. But I mean, your house is, is good enough that you don't necessarily need to apply for that. Or would you want to?
So that's, that's one I don't agree with because the ones that are doing, taking care of their property already are reaping no benefits. So the other one, the, the original idea, if it's tied to the code, I'm good with that.
But can we make the caveat that it's for Lander County citizens only and all the out of town, out of county property owners or out of state property owners do not benefit from that?
Well, I think that's why we wanted to make it a, a livable, code-compliant taxable structure. That way it eliminates, so the, whatever parcel that's on, um, that would be what the refund goes back to.
But that eliminates all bare ground?
Bare ground, correct. It doesn't have a livable taxable structure. And that was our idea behind that.
So the guy that owns seven properties in Austin on Main Street would get money even though he doesn't have any of them open?
You'd have seven taxable livable structures that are code compliant? Yep, he would get, he would be refunded.
So we're not really accomplishing anything to do something about our empty businesses?
On the flip side of that though, whether there's the, the vacant land guys are still paying taxes. That, so how do you, I mean.
Well, I think there are some of the caveats, like why we wanted to have this discussion to see where, where we can work our way through that or what the desire is. And then, and then we can have some bullet points we can bring back to legal and let them check some of the boxes.
So that was the whole point was to give back and however we need to slice that.
because it's, it's all of ours now to resource.
So does that, if, if you're, what about your commercial bill and what about NGM? Do they get a slice of the pie back based on their buildings and tax, tax base at the mine? Do they get a refund on that?
Good point. I would, I would think so. They're, yeah, well.
Their money, but.
Well, so now we're, now we're, now we're mixing private and business. We have a program set aside for business, right?
Yeah, but I think, I think he's talking about a blanket refund.
Just blanket, right. I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So if, if, if you have seven properties or twenty-two properties, you get a check for each one of those properties, or you just get one in general?
No, I think you'd get a, a check for every property. The, the idea was, like I say, this is all, this is all open for this guy.
So the developers that have split off and haven't sold would really benefit from that.
Not if they don't have livable structures.
That's the whole, that's the other thing that drives. If you have a bare ground, hey, wait, maybe I will put it on, you know? I'm gonna get some sort of a rebate, you know? It just, that gives some incentive for people to build, right?
And if you spread it out through every property owner in the county, we'd end up sending checks for twenty dollars. There's a lot of small parcels and, and even a few million dollars, which sounds like a lot, when you divide that up into thousands, it, uh, it turns into not very much. So the, the idea was to generate as much back to those who are paying the most.
Yeah, who are actually vested in our community.
Right.
Um, not the, not the massive landowners, you know, that don't live here and, and have no structures on there.
So personally, I mean, we belong to an LLC that owns quite a bit of, of bare ground in Lander County. So personally, I don't see a problem in not paying, not reaping a benefit from that. But reaping a benefit on my home, I agree with. So I, I guess I can see both. So I don't, I'm one guy that says I don't expect anything from my bare ground. And I would hope that the rest of the, the landowners would be okay with that, bare land.
And if the, you know, I mean, something that could be considered is some of these businesses have to be occupied, you know? If you guys wanted to make it a, a, you know, an incentive to occupy livable structures, I don't know, it's, it's all open for discussion, and then we can go back and let legal tell us if, if we can really do this or not.
Houses that have been sitting empty for X amount of years and empty businesses are exempt.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Johnny. Is there any other public comment or discussion on it or ideas?
I think it's a fantastic idea, and, um, I've driven, I've driven around the town, and me and I did some driving down south, and honestly, it's such a small percentage of this community and those communities that are eyesores. It's, it's not like every other, you know, resident looks bad. This, this program, the first one that Burt was talking about, has the potential. And I've been here for closing in on sixty years, and it's always looked like this. Actually, it looked worse. You guys know that. We were the armpit. It looked way worse. It could be maybe twenty-five percent of every residence was rough. And now it's, it's down probably to ten percent or less. So I think this, this has the potential, and let's just figure out any legal loopholes we have to figure out. Because if, if I, I personally, we have a couple of rentals, and I know one or two of them are right on the edge of compliance myself. You know, like you just get busy and you get distracted, and it would definitely motivate me, because we do pay an awful lot in property taxes. But the, the end game for me is, is if you just make it a fund and people can, can come grab from it, the wrong people are gonna be grabbing from it, the people that don't need to, and the people that need to work on their properties have zero incentive to come grab that money. It has to be some sort of a, you know, clean it up or you don't get it. So I think it's fantastic.
Okay. Um, is there any other public kind of questions or comments on it? You guys have any more questions? Okay, so I guess, um, we will just, um. So again, I'm understanding, right, the, the, the direction now or the understanding from the community and the, and the commission is that you want us to proceed forward with our initial idea and see how legal that is to, and then come back to you with, with a list of ideas on code compliance, on livable or non-livable structures, um, and kind of go through everything that we discussed, and then link a percentage, and then we can actually put a percentage if, if legal, and we'll, we'll check with the Department of Taxation. Um, Lincoln's got a, you know, pretty good contact there that'll work through some of this and let us know what they think on legality of it, and come back to you guys. Is that my understanding with our, with our initial idea?
And there's a good summation.
Link it to occupied structures and code compliant.
Yep.
Okay.
Lived in or used?
Yes.
Robert. Robert, quick. Um, I just have a couple of comments just to think about for that plan that you were talking about. Do you need to have some type of appeal process for somebody that doesn't just, that disagrees with their not in code compliance? And the fact that, um, getting the money to improve my property, is that triggering the assessor to raise my taxes?
Good question.
Because I put in a sidewalk.
Good question.
Yeah, I think the.
It is stagnant after the first year when people's taxes go up.
Yeah, so I think the direction that I have is not necessarily that the money is linked to you improving your property. It's linked to your property being code compliant.
Yes, I'm just saying.
Good point.
Properties improved, your taxes are going up, and so.
Yeah, we, every one of us that are improving our property are getting beat with that right now.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, yeah, that was, that, you're correct, Bert, and your summation. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next question. Uh, we're gonna jump, we're gonna take one other item, and that's 1.6, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the use of the old Lander County jail located at 25 East Second Street by the sober senior class of 2025 for the purpose of implementing the yearly haunted house event and fundraiser from September 12th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024.
Good morning, Alicia Price for the record. Um, so this will be the last year the kids do it. It's a great fundraiser for them, um, to go towards their, um, graduation party, which, um, we include, um, Battle Mountain and Austin. Last year, we sent a couple of things over there, so we hope to get them a little bit more next year too. Um, and maybe those kids would like to come over, and I don't know how we'd get them here, but um, it's a lot of fun for kids, keeps a lot of them out of trouble for the fact that they come and help decorate. They love to come in there and scare, um, and then they're earning money to go towards their projects. So, um, this will be the last year because Cassandra's retiring out. She said she's not doing it anymore, so. And she's like the, the creative girl there. So, um, anyway, so, um, if we could get it one more year, it'd be awesome, and then we'll get all of her, uh, junk out of there and clean it up by December.
Thank you. Uh, Commission, have any questions?
You run it clear through that whole time?
Well, because we got kids that do sports, so in order to get them in there to work and get all that up, you should come over. It's pretty amazing. Yeah, they, I mean, we build walls in there so that they have to navigate through, and yeah, it's, it's quite extensive building it and then, um, taking it back down, packing it up.
Right, yeah.
We've kind of laxed a little and left some that packed it up and left some in there, so it wasn't as hard, but, um.
So basically, you run it from the first of October through November fifteenth or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, like they'll start, like, once we're approved, they'll get in there and start, um, decorating and building the walls. So, um, yeah, so it's, uh, if you get a chance, maybe bring some of those kids over one night, because it's, it's pretty amazing. I mean, it's a great little haunted house, and I'll talk to Amber. Yeah. So, all right. And thank you for moving me up.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the old Lander County jail located on 25 East Second Street by the sober senior citizens, sober senior class of 2025 for the purpose of implementing a yearly haunted house event and fundraiser from September, September 12th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we'll get back onto our normal course here. So 1.2, for discussion on possible action to approve, disapprove authorizing up to three temporary part-time deputy sheriff's positions to be funded with existing budgetary funding while the sheriff's office continues to seek qualified candidates. These different positions would be authorized for a period not to exceed June 30, 2026. Why are we having such a hard time hiring people?
Uh, morning, Commissioner Robert.
Such a great program, right?
Yes.
Morning, Robert.
Just a little background. Currently, we have four open sworn positions in the agency, um, as well as one deputy's being deployed with the National Guard for over a year, starting two days from now. And I have another deputy that is, um, we're looking at probably an extended sick leave for an injury. Um, we continue to do our recruiting. It, we're like most other agencies, there's not a lot of qualified candidates. Um, through our recruiting, we've tested, um, just recently, we've tested six candidates, and, uh, four of them, after receiving the background, didn't put the background in. And, uh, one other, uh, was already been disqualified for drug use. So our, our, some of our biggest issues are, um, uh, the drug use that's disqualifying candidates, and the extensive background we're doing is, uh, ends up with the, with the other areas we look at. Um, criminal history and so forth is disqualifying candidates.
Well, let me ask you this. So if it's a qualification issue, how would that not affect part-time people as well?
Part-time will allow us to hire already certified retired deputies, um, and not affect perds, because it's under social security.
Got you. Okay.
Um, we have one current, um, retiree that's applied to do that. I have interest from the second one. So this is kind of a stopgap while we're continuing to try and find full-time employees.
So let me ask you this. On the part-time side of it, how is their pay determined?
Their pay, we would pay them the same wage as the starting wage. Um, it's lined out the contract.
Okay.
Although they don't apply to it, we pay them the same wage.
If they don't receive any of the bennies or the perds.
Correct.
Yeah. Are you looking at putting any of those in Austin?
Um, the one we have that has applied is for Austin. They want to.
Nice. Not having a deputy full-time there is just.
We have another deputy that's currently in training specifically for Austin.
Right.
And we continue to, um, staff Austin from Battle Mountain.
Yeah, for about six hours a day. So if we have a call in the middle of the night, we have to wait for you to get here from Battle Mountain.
Yes.
If we have an emergency call or anything, so having deputies there again will be really nice.
And does this, does this have to be done in cooperation with the union? Are they, how does that all work?
Well, that was gonna be my question, because you are extending this out until June 30, 2026, and the union's contracts expire June 30th, 2025, but that's it.
Part-time has nothing to do with that.
Oh, that's correct.
Okay, so part-time is completely within our control.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, good. Any other questions? No. Okay, does public have any questions or comments on it? All right, we, I will hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the three temporary part-time deputy positions to be funded by existing budgetary funding while the sheriff's office continues to seek qualified candidates.
I second it.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Uh, we'll move into 1.5, for discussion of possible action to present water pollution control permit for the Robertson Mine Project.
1.5?
1.3. Oh, sorry. Uh, 1.3, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. Um, I'm Maggie Corbury. I work for Nevada Gold Mines. I am the permitting lead for the Robertson Mine Project. Um, I submitted a letter to the commission. I have copies, your raw copies coming in the mail, but I submitted a letter for today's presentation, um, to discuss the water pollution control permit that is required, um, for the Robertson Mine Project. Um, we will be submitting a water pollution control application to Nevada Division of Environmental Protection Bureau of Mining and Regulation in Reclamation, um, per the Nevada Nat Code for forty-five point five or for forty-five point eight, three, nine, four. Um, the regulation come, they will be administering this permit to Nevada Gold Mines with the application. Every mine in the state of Nevada has to have a water pollution control permit. The purpose of the permit is to make sure that the mines are not degrading state waters. Um, our facilities would need to meet a zero discharge standard, so meaning for Robertson, our process solutions would be managed, um, onsite and would not go offsite, um, impacting state waters. Um, the water, water pollution control permits are subject to a public review, um, and notice requirements, and must be reviewed and renewed every five years with the state of Nevada. Um, the permits include groundwater surface monitoring, quarterly reporting requirements. Um, the regulation branch would require regular inspections of the site, um, and facilities to confirm that we're compliant with our water pollution control permit if approved. Um, and non-compliance could lead to penalties, um, and corrective actions to the site. Um, and then maintaining the, maintaining a water pollution control permit design, excuse us from, like, um, compliant with other permits, it may be required under federal state Clearwater Acts. Um, and then we are like, we're here today just to notify the county commissioners that we are applying for this permit, um, that doesn't require any approvals from the commission, but we are really happy to answer any questions about the water pollution control permit.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions? Does the public or staff have any questions? Okay, great. I'll hear, actually, there's really no motion, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into 1.4, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the memorandum of understanding between Lander County and Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce in an amount not to exceed twelve dollars per year. So this is just our standing agreement we have with like the Civic Center Chamber that, yeah. Uh, Commission, have any questions on that?
No.
Does the public have any questions, comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum, memorandum, understanding between Lander County and Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce in an amount not to exceed twelve dollars per year.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to 1.5, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the bid award for Battle Mountain well six water storage tank rehab project, PWP number LA dash two zero two four dash four six oh. One, Olympus and Associates in an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars recommended for acceptance. Two, Bar Construction DBA RDC in an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and Viking Painting LLC in an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Morning, Donnie.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is the bitch to replace the brought out floor on that two million gallon tank over here at well six. It comes in a little bit.
Yeah, this is the one we've been talking.
Yep.
A while.
Have, have they got the repairs done in the bottom of the tank?
That's what this is for.
Oh, this is for that?
Yep.
And painting the?
Yeah, and recoding it, yes.
Yeah.
The interior, right? Recoding the interior.
The interior, yeah.
So, Commission, have any questions? Public have any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, John Davis, sorry, this is the thing, then we just spend less money on arsenic removal on that. Is that the same?
Yeah, we built the arsenic plant.
Okay. All right, I will hear a motion.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the bid award for Battle Mountain well number six water storage tank rehab project, PWP number LA twenty twenty-four dash four sixty to Olympus.
Yep.
Not to exceed one million, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Donnie. Uh, we'll go to 1.8, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove amendment number three to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries, as well as Exhibit G, which includes a list of additional potential and actual defendants to the litigation agreement. Bill, do you have anything you'd like to say on it?
Well, it's, um, as you can tell, they, they keep adding defendants to it. That's part of it, and they just keep noticing little things that are wrong, so they've been making corrections. The Attorney General's Office is mainly spearheading it for the state, and to be honest with you, there's not a lot we could do if we wanted to, unless we just didn't want to participate.
Right.
But it looks okay. I mean, with all of the caveats that we've stated before regarding it.
Okay. Does the Commission have any questions? Public have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Uh, my motion that we approve Amendment Three to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries, as well as Exhibit G to the litigation agreement.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into 2.1, correspondence, uh, reports, futures, and items.
Guys, have any future agenda items you'd like to see?
No, no, it's a moment. Believe it or not.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's none, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment?
I brought it up earlier, but it didn't fit as well. So I just wanted to, there is an, just Google it. Utah, the state of Utah is filing, has filed a lawsuit challenging control over the B L M lands in the state of Utah. B L M manages about 70%. And of course, when you read through the articles, it feels like the ownership piece. And so they're going all the way back to the original intent of the constitution. And so we were discussing it at Pluac and I thought I would bring up, just so you're aware of it, that the land managers have become land owners. And as you guys know, I think with the exception of Alaska, Nevada has the highest percentage of B L M controlled lands. And in my mind, and this is my personal opinion, it's not by accident that Nevada and Alaska are the most controlled because we are also the most wealthy. I know most of you guys know that. I think we're third or fourth in the world in gold production, in minerals production. And when I say that, that's just the state of Nevada. That's not the United States. So you start with, you know, China and Brazil and Africa and Nevada. So it's not accidental. And I've heard my entire life, well, yeah, we need the B L M to manage it because of the wildfires. Well, when you're the wealthiest state in the union and one of the wealthiest regions in the world, you know, due to the fact that we're the most mountainous region, one of them in the world. I'm pretty sure we could figure out a way to manage and deal with wildfires, et cetera, with some ingenuity. So anyway, I thought you might want to take a look at that. And then Bill goes to our meetings and he talked about some sort of thought of maybe connecting with, I don't know, Bill, because I'm not an intern, so.
I'm, I was thinking we might put something on the agenda at a future meeting, but I mean, we just met Monday and that was too late to add anything for this agenda.
Yeah. Tell Reno right now how good the wildfire management's going. How many structures have they lost? How many acres, you know?
The commission might consider putting an item on the agenda for, for some of the solar fields that are coming in. I think Pam has a lot more information on that. But we, and I have, I have a fair amount as well, but it, it'd probably serve us a lot better to have that as an agenda item. If, if this commission likes, we can update you guys on, on what is coming to the, the western half of the United States and the, and the land that they're intending on using for solar projects. So maybe we can make that item if you guys would like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Naco has been talking about that a lot. My county is very proactive and is happy to share any of the stuff that they've been doing. That where they're trying to fight all of this solar. So.
I think just make that a green energy topic, if you guys don't mind.
Yeah, because of the wind farms too.
All right. Is there any other on public comment for non-agenda items? Okay. I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.